I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Move it.
Don't move anything yet, I just need to let you know that Dave contacted Mrs. Perry and said that he would be late this evening. Would someone move item number 1.02?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion, is there any additions or corrections to this agenda?
No, there are not.
Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Okay. Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvegor? Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
I don't see, Mr. DeJolorm?
Yes.
And just as a reminder, we're not doing public forum, but if you have, if you are watching and wish to make a comment or ask a question, you may do so at clerk@fulton.cnyric.org. You can also find that email address on the Fulton School District webpage. This brings us to item number 1.04. Would someone move it?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvegor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
abstain.
This, Mr. DeJolorm?
Yes.
Under President's Report, David's not here, so there's a couple of resolutions we need to talk about real quick, their ties. Resolution 24, if you've got your resolutions booklet for the voting annual meeting vote, which is... The proposed resolution was that NISBA seek legislative support for eliminating the initial public straw vote in the process for the prospective merger or consolidation of school districts. And there's a rationale that followed, and then the Resolutions Committee did not recommend this, and they noted that the straw vote may extend or delay the process, but ultimately believed that the vote provided valuable information to districts and board members and was worth the additional time and expense. So that was a draw. We had six people weigh in. Mr. Crandall, I don't know if you have an opinion?
Well, I've got an opinion on lots of things, but on that, what is it, is it to recommend to get rid of it?
It's recommended, yes, there, yes, to eliminate it, yes.
Then I will say no.
It would be, it would be for NISBA to lobby for the elimination of that rule.
Then I will say no.
You would say no?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any, anybody have any real strong feelings about that because a no would then put us over? Okay, and then item number, it was another one, 27, was not recommended by the committee, and that resolution is resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation that would require mandated reporters to participate in periodic refresher courses related to the signs of child abuse, as well as the process and requirements when reporting it. And the reason that was given from the committee was that it would be an unfunded mandate primarily, and that... Let's see. Well, I don't know if I've got all of this right here. It's very, very long, so...
I was gonna say, it was lengthy.
Yes, primarily unfunded mandate. I mean, they, they recognize it's important, but again, it's where the money's gonna come from to pay for that additional training. So, we're dead even, we can leave that for Dave to decide, but Tim, you want to weigh in, you didn't weigh in?
I will say no.
Okay. Alrighty, I thank you for that. Anybody else want, have anything they want to offer? Are there any questions with regards to the, any upcoming meetings? Okay, I had a question, I shared in backup sheet, you should have gotten the advocacy letter that came to us regarding aid to school districts. I think it came to me from Central New York, and I will be glad to send a letter on behalf of the Board if the Board so desires to have me do that. So that is my question to you, would you, do you want me to represent the Board's position regarding aid to school districts?
Yes.
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 Okay, I will take care of that, thank you. All right, I'm gonna turn this meeting over now to Superintendent Pulvino.
Well, good evening, everyone. I hope you also got to participate in the, in the virtual convention, I got to sit in on two, one with our own Jerry Geitner today, and Jerry did a nice job, it's always tough being on that first morning to see how everything's working out, did a stellar job representing Fulton, but more importantly, the importance of all of the social emotional supports and the trauma sensitive supports for staff and for students and for our community was, really showed we're really on our game, so once again, Jerry did a very nice job representing us and the work that all of our staff is doing here in the district, so thank you. And with that, our first presentation, Dan, if you could put up our reopening update, and we'll get right into it, we have a number of presentations this evening, lots of visitors, thank you, we're gonna talk about our Siemens, King, King is gonna talk, and LaChase are gonna talk about the Capitals, so we'll start with the reopening update and hit the highlights, how we're doing right now. So Dan, if you could go onto that second slide, please, or is it still getting ready to presentation mode here?
On my end, it looks like it's presenting, do you still not see it on yours?
Yeah, right now, it just says reopening update, and it looks like it's in, before it goes to presentation mode.
Let's see.
Best laid plans, right? There it is, I'm on the second sheet now, that's good, thank you.
Okay, there we go.
So, one of the things I would remiss, if I didn't say how proud I am of the faculty, the staff, our students, our families, we're on October 27th, and as we've been watching what's going on around us, we're very blessed, I feel very blessed when I get up each morning, and I haven't gotten a call from Chris Ells or Jerry Geitner telling me that we gotta start our day off thinking about challenges related to COVID-19, but a lot of the work has been that we're following our protocols, that we're, you're seeing our kids and our staff wearing their masks, and that's not easy, and I understand that. I was at one of the schools this morning, and one of the aides said to one of the students when they got off, "What do I see?", and the kid says, "You see my nose", and popped his mask right up over it, and it's really become, unfortunately, part of the way we do business, but I'm very proud of the fact, and I think there's that, I think we're doing, we're following our protocols in all the other areas, so all of the different parts of our organizations are working very, very well, and we hope to continue our momentum, and most importantly, that all of our staff and all of our students and our families are well and safe, and that really goes to our capacity to provide a safe, healthy, in-person learning environment for as many Fulton students as possible, we're riding right around that 68 to 70%, and that's what's gonna continue, based on our data that we recently received, we're gonna provide comparable online-only alternative to the hybrid in-person for our families, we've done that with our remote, and I think that's a work in progress as it is across the country, and then provide highest quality instruction possible in a year of constraints, plan, reflect, evolve, and repeat, and we also, we picked the right shoulds, folks, you know, and that wearing of the masks all day was one of those shoulds that we did, and I think we made some other very good decisions as well, so thank you for support, the Board. We have, this is just some of the, the overall, if you remember in the spring, we had done a survey, and what we were able to do is we actually asked some of the similar questions, and as you look there, you can see that, how do you rate your school district's plan to address health and safety during the reopening? We got some really good reviews there, the scale was very good, are satisfactory, and what was the other, Dan, I'm blocking on the third here?
Lacking.
Lacking, so we're 2% lacking there, but it was, that's good data there, you have the backup in your, in your, in your backup, there's data actually in each of the areas. How was the overall communication, Ben? 92%, very consistent in the spring, that was one of our high points in the spring as well. Our support of our child, our children's social emotional well-being since return, has a return to school, 92%, so that's one of our focus areas. We had not been engaged with our kids for six months in person, and also working with our kids remotely in the manner that we are, so that's an important one for us. Are familiar with Google Classroom, went from 81% to 88%, so that's a good trend upward. How would you describe the level of instruction? Obviously, something important to us, increased by 8%. Additional support such as 504, special education, English language learners, 77% to 86%, so a nice increase there, and then how would you describe your child's opportunities to connect and interact with our teachers, classmates, and other trusted And then how would you describe your child's opportunities to connect and interact with our teachers, classmates, and other trusted adults, and improvement? But until all those numbers come up into the 90s, our goal is to get those up into the 90s, but you can see we're, we've got the trends going in the right way. And I think we seem to be after, after what, seven weeks now, we seem to be in very good shape. So I was pleased by these results and it was nice to be able to compare the spring to now. And that's a nice piece of data for us to have. So I think it reflects well on what we're doing. Our attendance, I'm going to have Ms. Geitner and I believe Ms. Tiffany this evening. This was a request from the board, some information with respect to attendance from my last board meeting. Ms. Geitner and Ms. Tiffany.
Sure, go ahead and talk about attendance. So as you know, we are committed to recording our daily attendance for all of our students in school tool. And that is whether students are learning in person or remotely. And obviously, it's easier to determine what we, what is present or absent when it's in-person learning. So we spent some time this summer leading up to our reopening defining attendance for days when students are learning from home. And so our students will be considered present on those remote learning days when they participate in a two-way interaction with a teacher regarding academic or social emotional learning. And some examples of that are participation in a Google Meet. So if students log in with their teacher and either it's a whole group session or a small group meeting, or even an individual one-on-one meeting with a teacher for extra help or support, or like at the high school, the guided study hall check-ins that happen, that is considered attendance for that day. In addition, if a student submits a response to some learning activity that the teacher posts, whether that's a complete, completion of that assignment, or it's just a progress check, or if it's a request for help that says, I'm here, I'm working on this, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting it right now. And then the third option or example that we've given is participation in a conversation with the teacher either over the phone or email. So those are the, the areas that constitute attendance. If you take a look at the data, we know that there are two measures of attendance that we have historically tracked and paid attention to. The first one that you see on your screen right now is average daily attendance. That's the percentage of students out of the total who are present for school that day. You can see last year, our average daily attendance was 95% and this year we're at about 93%. So a slight drop, but not a significant change in average daily attendance. Though, the measure of attendance that we do spend a lot of time looking at and have his, over the last six or seven years or so, really focused in on chronic absenteeism. If you remember, we ended prior years with about 25% of our students being chronically absent, meaning they missed 10% or more of a school year. So when you look at this at the five-week point, being chronically absent means you've missed about two days because obviously it's a shorter number of days, smaller percentage, being chronically absent would mean missing about two days of school. So our numbers again have gone down slightly from last year where we were. 68% of our students currently have exemplary attendance and another 17% are still in that tier one of having attendance above 91%. But we have about 15% of our students who are chronically absent or severely chronically absent at this point in time. Now, as we work through these, these data points and we look at our students and how they are engaging, our structures for intervention are still working well. So when a student is absent from class, our teachers are reaching out to that student and/or their family. They are trying to determine what the barrier to attendance might be. If it's a quick fix, like I need a password, or I didn't realize my class was scheduled at this time, or just some extra words of encouragement, the teacher is addressing that. If it's something more complex that involves a higher level of intervention, the teacher is then referring that student to our student support team. And our student support teams are accessing interventions both within the school so that they themselves are intervening, or they're making referrals to community agencies. One of our challenges during this pandemic has been that, just like schools, our community agencies are faced with some more constraints because of COVID, about the type and nature of the services that they can provide, but they are also very creative and strategic and are, are working closely with us to develop solutions. Liz Tiffany and our school home liaisons sat in on a statewide call last week or so ago with juvenile justice system representatives, Department of Social Service representatives, and educators. And I will tell you, I'm going to brag a little bit, our Fulton folks got a lot of praise from those, that statewide audience for some of the systems and structures we have in place and predominantly because of the nature of the collaboration that we have in place with our community partners, and that's how we will continue to address this chronic absenteeism. And while we're on attendance, we always talk about student attendance, but we don't often talk about our staff attendance. And, and we really want to give a shout out to our teachers because our overall staff attendance rate in the midst of this pandemic has been outstanding. We really want to thank them for the work that they're doing to contribute to this healthy and safe learning environment and to adhering to our protocols and procedures. It's not easy. It can be very complicated when it comes to the screening and, and all of the rules that we have to follow, but they are doing a tremendous job. And while we are hearing from some of our neighbors that they're really struggling because teachers and other staff members have to be out related to COVID and otherwise, we are not experiencing that same struggle and our staff should really be commended for that. And now I'll have Liz talk a little bit about social emotional well-being.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, everyone. These next few slides will provide really some of the highlights of our work around social emotional well-being that have taken place so far this school year. I want to take a moment to say I'm really, I'm privileged to share this glimpse into the work that our faculty, staff, and administrative team have been doing. A lot of thoughtful time and effort have really gone into all of these initiatives. On this first slide, you'll see the four assurances in our reopening plan that are related to social and emotional well-being. First, our comprehensive counseling plans were reviewed by our counseling department this summer. No major changes were made, just adjusting some of the language to include virtual modes of learning and communication. So the fact that we can continue to provide the vast majority of our resources as past years, I think that that speaks to the dedication and the flexibility that our, our team has, our student support team has, regardless of the venue, regardless of the circumstances. A copy of those plans can always be found on the district website for review. You'll see that our second assurance states that we will establish a collaborative working group. We have two groups that are working in the district, leading the work in this area. That would be our school culture team and our district student support team. School culture leaders met over the summer and they meet once a month during, during the school year to collaborate. They then go back to their buildings and lead work specific to their building. And the district student support team consists of our school counselors, school home liaisons, and psychologists, some additional folks at the high school as well. And together they have done some really great collaboration around just continuously improving our systems of supports. And then again, that same group SST, they meet at the building level weekly to problem solve around individual or small groups of students. Our third assurance states that we will provide resources and referrals to address mental health, behavioral, and emotional support services. This is a process that happens through student support team. Really no changes from past years. We're continuing to meet the needs of our students, both in school and in the community. And finally, we commit to providing professional development opportunities that could be around developing coping and resilience skills for students, faculty, and staff, as well as just approaching the, the closure and welcoming and reorienting our students as school reopened this fall. Within our assurances, I had mentioned our school culture team and the work that was done this summer. One of our objectives of the time together was to explore a comprehensive document, the, it's called the Reunite Renew Thrive document. And it was put out by the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. It's a document that ended up being widely used and adapted by several schools in our, in our county, state, and across the country. So using that as a guide, we developed action plans for each building, each consisting of the priorities outlined on this slide, which I don't need to read to you, but you'll notice some of the, the trends throughout. You'll see words like safe, supportive, equitable, connections, relationships. Those are really the highlights of the, the work and planning that was done this summer. Sorry. On the side, on this slide, you'll see what's provided to all students as universal, so our tier one supports. All of our students pre-K through grade 12 have dedicated time in their schedule for social emotional learning. Of course, this is embedded in other subject areas as well, but we do have that structured time regularly for each student. We recognize the importance of this. It's evidenced by the inclusion of this in our action plans that I just spoke about, as well as our strategic coherence plan. In pre-K through eight, we use the second step program. And for our high school students, SCL skills are through their guided bell, and that focuses on building pro-social relationships, learning skills such as goal setting, reflection, different character strengths, inclusivity, goals that are needed for college and career readiness. As you know, our district also takes great pride in continuously improving our trauma-sensitive practices. We know that there are students and families in our community who have experienced adversity and trauma, and it continues to be our responsibility to approach the systems and situations, the students through that trauma-sensitive lens. And each school also routinely checks in with students. This occurs via phone calls, Google meets, as well as surveys, forms, assignments, other ways that students are encouraged to share how they feel in writing. And below that, you'll find a sample of just some of our tier two and tier three student supports that remain in place despite the changes that we've made to our instructional model. So these are not new, but I'm happy to say they are still in place. They are still going strong. They have been very creative in developing ways for students to access resources, both in person, as well as connecting with caring adults virtually. So we continue to have a strong student support team process for identifying student need, putting interventions in place, again, whether that's in our school buildings or in the community. And one last slide. So I don't want to leave out, we've talked about the support that we have for students, but I would like to highlight some of the ways in which we're working to support the adults who are working with our students. We certainly recognize that challenges and stress this year are probably at an all-time high. And each building has really developed numerous creative ways to obtain the goal of creating that space for adults to connect, heal, and build capacity. So this could include anything from, you know, frequent voluntary check-in meetings, open dialogue. I've noticed that faculty meetings have a different feel this year, a lot of open dialogue and space to share voice. Really that encouragement of sharing their voice, their concerns, their questions, opportunities to connect through the community circles that we did in the beginning of the year. We have ongoing PD around SCL, how to work with our students, as well as reflection resources for adults, strategies for managing stress. Buildings have various ways of acknowledging staff for their dedication, effort, flexibility. And as with students, we have the check-in surveys to keep a pulse on staff emotions and needs. We know that the focus is on well-being and it has to be for our adults in order to be the best version of ourself and be there for our students. So through all of this, we've really been receiving a lot of positive feedback this year, and we continue to look forward to monitoring and improving our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Appreciate you getting into detail on the social emotional supports for students and adults because of course, those are not only our priorities with reopening. That's also what New York State asked us to prioritize in advance. And that was absolutely a necessary foundational piece in order to set us up for providing quality instruction in this time of constraints. Usually, you all are very used to me discussing quantitative data, right? Slicing and dicing, as Mrs. Perry likes to say, slicing and dicing test scores and other different pieces of the, that quantitative numerical data. What we're finding at this point of the year, in this unique year, is that our qualitative data is as important, if not more important, to help us really understand our, our context and understand the feelings of our staff, students, and families. So that's what we're going to take a look at here, some of the perceptions of our families broken down by our six different instructional models now. It's important to, to remember that, you know, typically we're talking about data for a single K-12 in-person model. Now we're very much implementing six different models of instruction. Not only hybrid versus online only, but that also gets differentiated by the different grade bands, right? So through this data, we want to really offer a major thank you for the support that our community is, is demonstrating to us. You know, we recognize that there is nothing that beats in-person instruction for all students all days of the week. And we can't wait to get back to that. We know that our teachers can't wait to get back to that model. Many of our teachers are working harder than ever and really feeling frustration at the, at the constraints that this year brings, that they only get to see their, their students two days a week in grade six through 12. So we're very, very appreciative of the support that we see from our, our community in these results. As we dig deeper into the hybrid results in 68 and 912, where we see, you know, still 78% of our, of our families responding that they're satisfied or, or very satisfied with the instruction their students receive. What we find when we take a look at the comments from those folks in many cases is an expression that they find two days of school, of in-person school, less than what they'd hoped. And of course, that's, we feel the same. So while we will, whenever we present you data, we're going to do our best to present it by these six different versions of how we instruct this year. And we're also going to make a real effort to show you the experience of our teachers and students, okay? This is a difficult year to experience all that our students and teachers are because unlike a typical year, we can't walk down the hallway and pop into every classroom. But we have outstanding things going on in, whether they're in physical classrooms or in Google classrooms virtually. And it's great when we get a chance to share some. Today, we're going to show you an example of what asynchronous instruction can look like. So this is an instruction that our high school global history students would encounter through their Google classroom in Mr. Benjamin's global history class. We're going to watch a little bit of Mr. Benjamin's video. And following that, he's going to describe a little bit about his experience with asynchronous instruction this year. And one final note, I want to apologize to Mr. Benjamin and the viewers. Unfortunately, the quality that comes through when we share a video in this format and Google Meet is not as good as when we watch it outside of it, okay? So for that reason, we've also posted a link. If it doesn't come through very well for you, either in this meeting or folks watching at home, you can click the link in the YouTube description of this video so that you can watch it at any time. So with that said, Mr. Benjamin. Oh. Try that again. Try that again.
Learning targets for a RIF episode. I can explain multiple causalities of RIF French Revolution. I can describe important events of the French Revolution. I can contrast the successes and failures of Napoleon Bonaparte.
Conditions prior to the French Revolution set the stage for rebellion. Change had momentum. Europe was going through the Commercial Revolution, the Renaissance, the Scientific Revolution, Protestant Reformation, changes brought about by the Climate Exchange and Enlightenment, all of which were challenging the old traditional ways and beliefs. The Enlightenment, a European intellectual and cultural shift in 1780 to 1800, in which philosophers and artists promoted reason and human freedom over the traditions and religion of the Middle Ages. Enlightenment thinker John Locke said governmental power comes from the people and not from God. This idea would replace the divine right of authority of absolute monarchies of Europe. Locke also said that people have natural rights and that the role of the government is to protect people's natural rights. If the government fails to protect people's rights, the people have the obligation to overthrow and replace the government. The Enlightenment thinker Jean Jacques Rousseau said that government rules according to a social contract with the people and must therefore rule as the people want them to. Enlightenment thinkers wrote about equality, empower, and rights. The printing press helped to spread these ideas. They arrested me for violating human rights. Good thing they didn't find out about all those human laps.
Okay, some things that are working well with teaching students online. Teachers are learning a tremendous amount. We're looking at what we need to know to better teach our students. Administrators are kind of getting out of the way and letting us go look up information and finding out what we need to know to better teach. And this is transformative. A lot of the things that we're learning to do will stay with us when we go back to live teaching. All the new technology and so forth, we'll have that in our back pocket when we go back live. Biggest challenges to online instruction, kind of twofold. First, students that are choosing not to be involved in their learning. When they're live in front of you, you can encourage, you can cajole, and you can, you know, build a relationship with them and get them to do stuff. Students have always been in charge of their own learning ultimately. Now, they're even more so. The other thing that's been a problem is time. Everything takes more time this year. We're inundated with emails. We, all of our old lesson plans and materials cannot be used, most of it, so we're reinventing everything. Every teacher is a new teacher this year. Well, you got to meet the students where they are. A lot of students are online all the time. They're used to real short, quick videos, that that's what they do all day. And so we're trying to adapt and do things the way they meet the students. Students are also very diverse. Some students, you give them lots of short, real quick things, and they will spread that out over time. And then there are some students that will do a marathon learning event, and they will work all day long and get their whole works, week's worth of work done all at once. Learning to engage students asynchronously. This year, we have less time with students, and we have to teach really the same things. So we've really had to concentrate it down to the most essential things for them to know. But that leaves us worried that when a common assessment comes along, you know, a state test or something, the students are being instructed with less time and less depth or less breadth, and they're still going to be measured the same. Well, the goals are always kind of the same. You reflect, adapt, and improve. That's the same as any year. The new thing is, though, that all of the old stuff is gone. We have to reinvent everything, redo everything. Every teacher is a new teacher again.
That's going to be tough to follow, but I'll give it a shot. That's impressive. Makes me miss the classroom quite a bit. So this year, in transportation, we started by trying to manage and facilitate all the challenges that we faced with the changes in the schedule and so on and so forth. And we also had some staffing changes. And I thought I'd give you a quick update in terms of where we are. And I just want to start first, sort of at the end of the slide, with some of the goals we had in mind with transportation. One of them was to try to identify more efficient routing processes to hopefully make our pickups and our drop-offs quicker. We're also looking at, I brought this map up on purpose because I wanted to see the current routes, and the overall goal was really to increase instructional time. So as we started this process, I thought it might be prudent for us to work with our routing application provider, TransFinder. So what I did was, I brought them in to do sort of an audit of our processes. And this is, we're sort of at the beginning of that process, so you could kind of see what we've seen through the application. The map that you're seeing on the screen here is a graphic representation of our routing as it stands now. And what you're seeing there is several passes across the same neighborhood, and we need to change that quite a bit. And then, of course, that means really looking at our whole transportation process as we move along. So again, we're in the beginning stages of trying to change this and look at different ways that we might provide busing for our students. And again, we're doing better at this. We're sort of at the beginning of this process, so we'll continue to give you updates as we move along. But you can see that a number of route, the routes that we discovered were less than efficient, so we want to change that as quickly as we can.
Mr. Lee, are the passes because of there's not enough room on the buses?
Well, again, that's part of it. That's a great question, because obviously, we have to, there's less students on each bus now, so we've had to rethink how that happens. And unfortunately, we had to rethink it using a program that was already set up for normal schooling, so we had to change how the data was input and try to find different ways to use it. And we're still learning how to use that particular application, because this year we actually installed the latest update, so we're not quite familiar with it yet, but we're getting there, and TransFinder is providing a lot of help in that process.
Okay, and will we have to revisit this again next year with TransFinder if we're back to normal next year as well?
We're going to try to do the normal routing, assuming we're going to go back to normal during this process, during the learning process, so kind of doing that in parallel with COVID routing, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, I want to just, on that, thank you, Dom. We're working really closely with Golden Sun and our transportation team. This, we were using a version that was about 10 to 15 years old of TransFinder, so we're starting to use this new TransFinder, and we're also looking at how do we change some cultural and some procedural things that we've done over the years? There's some paradigm shifts that we're doing as well. I had the opportunity this morning to observe at one of our elementary schools, and I promptly, I had a great conversation this afternoon with Golden Sun and actually our Director of Transportation this morning, and just gave some ideas and thoughts about some things that we can adjust immediately, as well as some things that are more long-term. So our goal is not only to be efficient down the road, but as efficient as possible immediately, and try to maximize every minute that we can get with our students.
Do you think this will become a problem when our lovely winter hits, since you're saying that we're going back and forth, kind of, and we don't, we want to get there in time for our kids to have time for school? How do you see this looking once lovely central New York weather hits?
Well, I think, you know, I think one of the things is that we have an outstanding partnership with Golden Sun. Even in the winter in the past, and if you pulled up previous routes, they'd kind of look like this in the past, too, some of them. And so I think we're going to be okay with that. I think they've got the system down. I think we're actually doing some tweaking that'll improve some things as well, Ms. Abogor. So yeah, I think it's, in this winter, we actually have never dropped off in the winter. It's something that's amazing, watching Golden Sun, unless it's absolutely coming down. And even then, they are safe. We have one of the best safety records around as their provider, and they've been very efficient even in the winter. They do a really nice job, so I don't see us dropping off from that end at all unless we have a really bad wintry type of day. That'd be one of those days where I'm up at 4:00 a.m. thinking about, do we need to be coming in or not?
Is coming in late at this point, or have we kind of gotten that ironed out?
Our secondary looks very good in the morning. We are cleared by 7:38, and our runs, for the most part, are cleared by nine o'clock. There's one or two outliers in the elementary that we're going to address immediately, and we think we've got some solutions for those within a couple of days. Mr. Kanane and I actually had a conversation this afternoon, actually right before the board meeting, he and I actually had about a half-hour conversation, so, yep.
Brian, I do think we're going to run into issues this winter with thermometers. Just knowing my experience in the medical field and trying to get a thermometer to work in the cold, it takes double the time, just as a word of caution to start testing.
Yeah, we actually, it was in our unit meeting yesterday with our different presidents, they actually came up from our aid unit, brought it up, and Mr. Ells and I had discussed that later today. We also had come up last week to his attention as well. So we're looking at that, and I believe he'll actually be presenting on this next slide. He could answer that question, but he's actually reached out to the company, and we're looking at different strategies, because we're noticing, obviously, we want to make sure that those temperature checks are as accurate and as efficient as possible, but infrared in 20-degree weather is an interesting combination.
Especially when it's nine minutes, 10 degrees.
That's right, with a breeze. Mr. Ells, athletics, please.
So thank you for providing me tonight. I do have just a, you know, a quick update of what we were able to accomplish this fall. So we were able to run some practice sessions for our student athletes. Our coaches were able to go out there Monday through Friday, starting right around October 1st. Their last scheduled day is going to be this Friday, October 30th. The sessions are about approximately two hours long. The coaches are going right through and doing their regular practice plans and then throwing in some, you know, game-like activities, you know, towards the end of their practices. On a good day, we have about 175, 200 students out there, student athletes participating. And, you know, some days like yesterday, a little cold, a little rainy, and, you know, we had closer to 75 students out there. But on an average, we're about 100 to 175 students a day. Those sports include boys' and girls' soccer, volleyball, which is being played outside, football, cheerleading, cross-country running, and golf. So we have all of those teams coming out and participating. We are not providing transportation for any of those students. They are able to find their way to the school and home again. Coaches are doing temperature checks, they're doing attendance lists, and, you know, cleaning all of their equipment at the end of practices, disinfecting all of the, you know, equipment that they're using. Volleyball, very interesting one. We were told, you know, we told them that, you know, there are no indoor activities, no weight rooms, no gymnasiums, no locker room sort of used. Volleyball figured it out. They figured out a way to hold practice by grouping their student athletes and using our tennis courts, their own standards out there. And while they're not the official standards that you would use in a volleyball contest, they are at least out there in cohorts, being able to hit the ball back and forth and get some kind of, you know, volleyball going. And we, we're having, you know, great participation in volleyball, like we usually do. About 30, 35 girls are coming out, so.
Is this just for high school students, or did we incorporate this into our?
No, so we did just start with the high school students. You know, with the late start that we got on this, we did only focus on the high school and getting them rolling right now.
Okay, and what does that, all right, so you said Friday is our last day for running these practice sessions. What do you anticipate our next step looking like? Because when would winter sports start?
So right now, winter sports are scheduled to start November 30th. So that's obviously, you know, a little, little more than a month away, a month from, it'll be four weeks from Monday coming up here. So we're still waiting on guidance from New York State, the governor's office, and from the New York State Athletic Office as well. They have not released any of the high-risk sports, which would include basketball, wrestling. So it would be pretty difficult for us to start off until we have some more guidance coming from our governor and from our state office.
Okay, so the group won't be doing anything between October 30th and November 30th, though, unless you get guidance from the state and the governor?
Correct. Well, you know, some of our coaches have asked, you know, we put on October 30th just as a, you know, a timeframe to use, because as our weather starts to change, so does our participation level. There are coaches that have asked, specifically soccer and volleyball, if, you know, the weather's nice, can we still go out and practice? So absolutely, you know, they still have to follow the guidelines that we have established. But our session that, you know, that we set up, you know, will end on Friday. But I do know that, you know, the kids are already asking if they can continue with some, some types of activity.
Have the coaches and the student participation, they will let you know when they're down on the field or when they're using it?
Yes.
Who's down, what's, okay.
The coaches do a great job. I'm always impressed with our coaches because they work so well together, and they're able to coordinate their practices. There's, you know, they're able to share the field and not be, you know, in each other's way, and they do a great job with that. So, you know, I have no hesitations with them being able to communicate, you know, when practices will be or how the field will be shared in years.
Great, thank you so much. And we're so, we feel thankful for the coaches being so flexible that way with the kids. So thanks to all who are involved.
Yes.
Our kids and staff, they've been just amazing, and Chris has done a really nice job. One is our COVID coordinator. He knows the Department of Health better than anybody, I think. He's doing a really nice job with that. He's also been advocating, because he's had a certain superintendent in his ear constantly about athletics, trying to stay in his own lane with that. But he's been doing a really nice job reaching out to the other athletic directors and just really sharing experiences and really being active. He always has been, but maybe I hear about it more, but he's doing a really nice job with that as well, so I would be remiss if I didn't share that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And as the COVID coordination, it's really been, he's been, any times we've had anything, as I mentioned, having he and Jerry are a great pair together, really filtering through and working through some of the challenges that come with COVID-19, not only acquiring all the supplies and materials, but making sure we meet all our assurances and follow the DOH guidelines. So again, thank you to the team in that area. Extracurricular clubs, we put out ability for advisors to put in ideas on how to do them virtually. They'll be meeting virtually starting in the second quarter, starting November 9th. So that's when our extracurricular clubs will begin meeting, and club advisors have submitted their proposals to provide students a range of opportunities. Jerry, anything you'd add to that, Ms. Geithner, or has that captured the essence?
That really captures it. You'll see some club advisors on our resolutions for approval this evening. There are a couple of others that we're still exploring and trying to... and trying to figure out um, a viable way to bring additional opportunities to our students. And if if we are able to do that, we'll bring those resolutions back to the Board of Education as well.
Okay.
So all of our, they must meet virtually. Are there any groups that can meet in person?
At this time, because they would be indoors, we are meeting virtually.
Okay.
Right. As we get more guidance, obviously, watching very closely what's going on across the state. There was a little bit of a increased weight of the South in the state and obviously nationally. Um, so we want to continue to ease our way through this. We've been doing a really nice job. And I, you know, and again, we want to continue to find ways to to provide opportunities for our staff and students to to engage in many different, unique ways.
And just just to ask, this isn't necessarily an extracurricular club. Um, I know that our our music programs are um, uh, usually run during the school day, but this is the time of year where we would normally have like some concerts and some wonderful um things like that going on. Is there been any thought of how we could maybe entertain that um, maybe virtually as well? I don't know if any, any, if that has been something that's been talked about or thought about, or or even how that would happen. But I I know that the kids usually work really hard and um, I don't know if you guys were thinking about anything down that line.
I haven't been a part of any formal conversations, but I think as we've continued to figure this, I'll feel better in about three or four weeks to see, you know, again, are we are we move more indoors? Do we maintain what we've accomplished? I think that's key. And then how do you ease into those things to make sure? So I I think there's conversations that would would need to take place with obviously the administrative team and then the teachers that would um, obviously be the the key teachers in each of those areas that you mentioned. So, all righty. Yep. And then moving forward, uh, based on the data, we were pleased, no changes necessary to our model. So the the right there, the K5, four days plus the one-day remote, the 612, two days in person, the three days remote, and then the alt option, obviously, remote only, which is family choice. We're going to continue to monitor closely. Um, we watch those those uh assurances very closely uh to make sure that we're following those. Um, we also keep an eye on our strategic coherence plan and our DSEP and how we make sure that all of those those three things are coherently, how they're they're working together uh and supporting one another. And then we're going to adjust as needed what we've been doing. And you you hit on temperature checks. That's something we need to get our head around as it gets colder. So with that, that's the conclusion of this report. Um.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, Brenda.
Back a little bit when we were talking about um, uh, the instruction that um, in the graph of how they were um, received the school was reopening. Um, where some of like for our our IEP, our five oh four plan kids, is that information that was um, thought about when putting the hybrid and online learning graphs together? I mean, are they, are their needs being met? Are 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 virtual students getting everything that they need? And and how does that look?
Yeah. You know, I think we might want to talk more about special education as a group. And it was one of the questions. I think it was what, number eight or nine? Some seven or eight. And you know, the feedback we're getting is good, but I think as you start to the the federal government, interestingly, um, in the summer had a set of guidance. And then not surprisingly, on September 28th, put out a different piece of guidance around special education with less flexibility in that. And then finally, the state of New York just sent the guidance out from New York State in response to the federal government response um, just as late as last week. Um, and it's interesting. I sit on the commissioner's advisory panel um for New York State for special education. I've served on that committee, I think, for about 13, 14 years now. Um, and that's the opportunity, that's the team that actually has all of those discussions before they go to the Board of Regents. And so I sit on on that panel and it's got parents, it's got teachers. And across the state, I think as we dig in and we we really dig back on the layers, students with disabilities are, they're struggling in a lot of different ways, and each one is individual and unique. And I think, um, you know, I've been meeting quite a bit with Kathy lately, and we're really putting a greater lens on that um, to make sure that our kids are getting what they need. Um, you know, I had a great conversation, you know, with a parent the other day. Um, and and it's interesting, in remote, yet we talked about the fact that some of the things that she really needs are things that she really needs to do in person. So that's a unique conversation. And and that's what we have to remember about special education is that everything is very individualized. So Kathy and I, I think we've had more conversations in the last week and a half concentrated, Ms. Adams and I. We're going to continue to take a really strong look at this because um, I think it's an area, I mean, there's um, nationally, there's some lawsuits going on, you know, things like the IDEA around ID nationally, class action things where from the spring where kids weren't getting what they needed. So we're going to lay a lens back on it again. Um, and it's something we're monitoring closely because we have close to 500, actually close to 600 students with disabilities here in our district. So it's a very high-concentrated area. Um, I think our kids in person are looking pretty good, but our kids that are remote, it's hard to know exactly. So I think we're going to dig in and really get an idea and do some case studies, really take some deep looks at some complicated kids to see how they're doing. That's the best way for us to learn and grow.
Yeah, because it can even be as simple as just our kids who might need some testing mod accommodations. Are they feeling comfortable enough being virtual to say, you know, I need this, I'm not getting this? Or are they just doing what they need and and not bringing it to your attention?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're looking at all that. It's a great question, Brenda.
I have one also. Oh, go ahead.
I just, on that part of Brenda's, do we know how many families responded to that survey?
The survey was just over 1,100.
Okay. And we have what, 3,400 students, 30?
32 pre-K. We have 31 K12 and um, 108, I think, pre-K.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is um, we had discussed, I'm sorry, we didn't discuss, but I heard a couple of different things about comments and what families, you know, need or or want. Is there a way for the board to get like a copy of the comments on that survey for us to review?
Yeah, I'm just taking notes. Sorry, you know me. Yeah, you know me, taking notes and and writing down here. Yeah, we can, we can put together a package of those, um, like we do for the climate survey that we've done in the past.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'll let Lynn go, and then I have a question for Mrs. Geithner after.
My question is about guided study hall. I've had some people ask me the importance of that. Can we do a overview of that at some future um meeting?
Would you like it in a presentation or would or just in board backup? What would be would be okay? Which would you like?
I would like presentation because I believe a lot of people are watching now and maybe they can understand it because it's quite important, especially now. So.
Absolutely. Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just out of habit, though, so we stay consistent, I saw one head shaking. Is the board uh in agreement that we'd like this um, presentation?
Yeah.
I got one, two, 10?
Yep.
Nick? Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good show. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rob. And thank you for sticking to to our protocol. Thank you.
Okay. I'll give a few questions about attendance. Um, student is a virtual student, and let's say they're in childcare during the day because the parent's working. Would the only way to probably be taking attendance would probably be submitting a response to the learning activities? Because if they wouldn't be able to um, participate in a Google Meet, is that correct?
Um, yes, that the example, the examples we shared were exactly that examples. So there are some structures that are in in place. For example, um, another method might be that daily check-in that Ms. Tiffany described and how am I feeling today? What do I need help with? That would definitely count as that participation. Um, but we also have teachers reaching out via email, via phone call. So that would be another way that those students might be able to participate.
Okay, great. And then my other question is, um, these are going to be pertaining to like the seven through 12. Um, if a student is absent um at the secondary level, let's say they are participating in English, but they're not showing up to MAF. How do parents get notified of those absence? Because I I don't know if there's something in school tool that will show for each class necessarily.
At this point, that has been one of the issues that we are working through, that course-specific attendance. There are some challenges that we face because of the schedule model um, and the school tool system not being quite built for the model in the pandemic era. So we are working through how that is reported. Google Classroom is one of those ways that that would be able to reflect a student's participation and attendance. But we are still working to streamline that communication um, so that parents are aware of that.
Okay. And then my last question is, um, after approximately, how many missed classes do teachers reach out to parents? And then after that, how many times are are they absent before they're reaching out and referring them to the SST team?
So we are asking teachers to reach out um whenever a student is absent from class. So they may start with the student first and email them or communicate with them, be a reminder, whatever other method they're using. Um, and then if that is starting to impact a student's participation, we obviously want all of our teachers to reach out to parents as well. Um, student support team can either be teacher referral-driven, or the student support team itself looks at the data. So it's not just dependent on the teacher saying the student isn't attending. The team each week when they meet, they review the attendance information, they review student grades um and behavior, and they generate their own interventions based on the information they have, um, independent of the teacher referral.
But is there any certain percentage or goal? Is it, you know, is there anything like the students miss five days or?
No, we have. No, I'm sorry.
No, I'm.
I it keeps, I'm glitching a little bit, so I thought you were finished. I didn't mean to interrupt you. So the um, there isn't a specific timeframe. We just ask teachers if they can't resolve it themselves, if they don't think that they've come up with a a solution to that attendance barrier that they just refer on. But again, we know that sometimes um, there there might be a number of things on a teacher's plate and they don't get that referral right away. So it's not just teacher referral dependent. It is also the student support team looking at the information that they have available to them through school tool, through Google Classroom, um, and using that information, making a determination of the interventions that have to be put into place. So we don't have a cutoff in our plan right now for when a teacher is referred, but we have lots of eyes on different data points. So hopefully, we're not missing students that way.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Well, thank you. A lot of information, um, a lot of good things going on, a lot of work that we continue to do. And there's always room for us to grow and improve in everything that we're doing. Siemens, Mr. Parch, how are you, John?
I'm good. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you all right. And then Chris is going to be with you too, Christopher Gump, right?
Yes, Chris is.
He's in the bottom corner there. We asked Siemens to come forward, two pieces for the board. One, um, just wanted to go over the the annual report just around some of our savings, things like that. And then the other piece, just where are we at with our current EPC project? We hadn't talked with you about that in a while. Felt like we needed to bring that back around, uh, just to get everybody up to speed because, believe it or not, we've been working really hard in this area. And it's hard to believe we're almost ready to start getting some work done as well. So John and and Chris.
Um, well, I I guess to start, you know, Chris and I, um, we were going to invite our performance assurance um representative, but he had a, an emergency at home. So we're going to just give you a kind of an executive overview of uh, that 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 project and how that um, how that project's working out. Uh, so I guess, why don't, why don't I ask Chris, I I know you, Chris has been talking with Josh and they went through the report. I also looked the report over. Um, Chris, can you just give us kind of the, an executive overview of, you know, what you guys went through this morning, uh, this morning?
Yes. Uh, so this report uh helps to put a wrap on annual period eight. Uh, so it's been eight years since the completion of that last phase. Uh, and just summarizes the savings uh for that past period and also to date. Uh, so just to kind of summarize, the contracted guaranteed energy savings for this past uh eighth period was $323,754. Uh, the actual realized savings was $399,920. Uh, so that represents an excess or a over guarantee, over the guarantee savings of $76,166. Uh, to date, uh, the guaranteed savings for the first eight uh years of the project was slated to be $2.34 million. Uh, the actual realized savings to date is 2.718 in give or take a couple of dollars there, uh, million dollars in savings. Uh, so that's an excess savings or increase over the guarantee of $377,000 uh and change, or 16% uh positive variance from the guaranteed savings. Um, to date, uh, the, just to kind of put it in a, kind of a green terms for the board, uh, the original baseline consumption was 3,118 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions. Uh, the last phase of this project represents a 25% decrease uh in those emissions, down to 23, 26 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions. Um, and then just to kind of put a little adder onto this executive summary, I I know some people were wondering about um, the added savings from the shutdown of the district when COVID hit back in March. Uh, I I did speak with Al Crump this week to kind of find out uh what was done in the district, uh, you know, different from your normal occupancy and usage. Um, at the time of the shutdown, uh, within, within a few days of that, uh, I know pretty much district-wide, you reduced uh temperature set points around the district down from your normal occupied uh temperature set points uh back to about 65 degrees, keeping in mind that there were still some people in the building. Um, and obviously with uh reduced occupancy, the the on-time of the lighting and some of the vending machines around the district were were obviously reduced with people not being there. So not knowing for sure what the level of occupancy was, I went back and looked at the original calculations and estimated it was about a eight to 12% increase in the expected savings, uh, both electric and natural gas combined due to the the buildings not being occupied for that for that month or two prior to the summer break. So that's kind of a quick overview on the savings. Um, John, I'll give it back to you and want to see if there's any questions about anything.
Yes. Um, so so that's the project that it's currently in eight, you know, year eight. And as um Brian had mentioned, just we had prepared a quick presentation back a few months ago. We took that presentation and updated it uh for today's update. And I don't know if you want me to share a screen, Brian, or how how.
Would you like me to share it? I can put it up on the screen. I think I may have the right one.
That would be great.
We'll see if I got the right one. You tell me when I get it up there. Does that look right? All right. Not up there. I gotta put it up there, don't I? One second. Give me one moment. Uh, present now. My entire screen. This, that. Yeah, let's go here. Is this the presentation?
Yeah, that looks, that's good. Yeah.
All right. And let me just go into slideshow and from the beginning. And that looked all right?
Yeah, it looks great. So you want to flip it to the next. So this next slide is just a kind of a refresher on the the law that we use to do these projects, just a quick um, once-through on it. The these projects are self-funded through the energy savings. Uh, so it allows you to take infrastructure that you would maybe want to do and not have to do it through capital dollars. You could do it through an energy project, which allows you to use your money in a different way. So when you're doing this, it also has aid and it also has incentives that we can apply for through New York. So there's different revenue streams that come into play. It's performance-based and it's over 18 years. That's the way the rules are set up with the law and uh SED to get your aid in place. So that's really a once-through on the program. This next slide, um, if you want to flip it, is Chris's slide. Then we're going to go over the schedule. And then there's a little slide that Chris will go over as it relates to the carbon benefits and emissions. So go ahead, Chris.
Yep. So this is uh the scope of work that we have. Yep, so this is, uh, the scope of work that we had probably the last time we presented. I, I think at the time, uh, we had some items that were pending, uh, some later items that we had and adjusted, uh, that we were still getting some pricing together for, uh, everything that we did have pending on that last one is in the project. Um, so this is what we have submitted to the state. Um, it includes obviously all the lighting upgrades. This is, uh, upgrading the whole, all of the buildings in the district, uh, district-wide to LED, uh, for the most part. Uh, LED lamps and, and new fixtures in select areas. All the hallways will have new fixtures, the gymnasiums, uh, and some other unique areas will have new fixtures and everything else will be new LED lamps and equipment. Um, these, uh, football field, track and tennis courts will all be upgraded, uh, to LED with new fixtures and control system. Uh, so that'll give you some superior functionality, uh, be able to do some pretty cool effects and such with that, while also obviously saving significant energy. Uh, the paved walkway between the high school and junior high school will have, uh, twenty-four new poles added with walkway lights to illuminate the entire length of that, uh, path. Uh, we'll pull power from the stadium building there to power that up, uh, so that'll be a nice security addition there. Uh, the high school auditorium house lighting, uh, we're going to replace all of those existing high wattage incandescent fixtures with new LED and a new, uh, or be able to dim those lights with a new, uh, dimming system there. So we'll upgrade the whole house, uh, with that. The, all staying in the high school auditorium, uh, there's currently no, uh, walkway lighting. We plan to line the aisleways with, uh, new, uh, LED lights to illuminate that pathway, uh, and allow for egress, um, when the house lights are down. Uh, the next one there, uh, destratification fans, these are small turbines that will help to, uh, distribute air better in the gyms, uh, keep the warm air at the floor where it should be. Uh, and then we've got some building control optimization measures, uh, kind of around the district. This is just utilizing the existing control system to operate equipment more efficiently. Uh, only, you know, conditioned air that's needed in those spaces, uh, just to save some energy with that. Uh, building envelope improvements, just again, just better sealing up the buildings, the roof wall interfaces around entry doors and such, just to keep air where it should be and have cold air not get into the building. Uh, mechanically, uh, we are replacing all of the boilers at Volney Elementary. Uh, we already have replaced one at the junior high school. We've got a little bit of, uh, combustion air work to be done. Very soon here, uh, we're, we're close to approval. That's one of the first things we're gonna tackle to have those boilers operating efficiently. Uh, steam trap replacement and, uh, radiator valves in the three steam buildings left on campus. Uh, we plan to either replace or rebuild all of the traps in, uh, Fairgrave, Lanigan and the, the Ed Center, uh, as well as put in some valves and some of the radiators that do not currently have any temperature control to, to stop overheating that's happening in some of those spaces. Uh, the cooling tower at the junior high school, we're going to refurbish that. Uh, we're gonna replace a lot of the components, uh, fan motors, valves, um, give it a new paint job. Basically just revitalize it as much as possible to, uh, bring it back as close to, uh, new as we can, uh, and get, get some more usage out of it. Uh, the pool cover at Granby, uh, we're going to replace and repair the deployment system there, uh, so that it's, uh, an automatic deployment system again, uh, so that we can get some big savings out of having the pool covered when it's not being used. And the last one there, variable frequency drives on the hot water pumps at Granby, uh, we're going to replace those that are currently not functioning. Uh, so that's the over, quick overview of the full scope. Turn it back over to John.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. And from a, from a timeline point of view, we're, we're, we're getting a lot done here. We've been working hard with our partners, King and King and IBC. Um, the package has been sent off to SED and we are currently through round one of questions. So we're hopeful here that, uh, we're getting close to the final approval, knock on wood. And this is projecting that out. So if we get our approval here in the near future, we're projecting, say in November, then we would source our funding in December, start construction in January. The actual construction, it'll typo there, um, it's a twelve-month construction, although I'm expecting it to, because of the time of the year that we've came out, I'm thinking that it'll be less than twelve months. So that's actually construction completion right now has been targeted for January twenty-twenty-two. Sorry about that. So that's really where we're sitting. We're excited about getting, you know, things off and into construction. Uh, Chris, this is your emission slide that you just updated. Do you wanna?
Yeah, so just to put the anticipated energy savings into kind of some more real terms, uh, you know, you can compare to day-to-day items. Uh, we're anticipating, uh, one point one-two-one million kilowatt hour, uh, savings, uh, with all of the lighting and electrical measures there. And natural gas, we're anticipating one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and five, uh, terms of natural gas to be saved. Uh, that equates to taking three hundred and twenty-five vehicles, passenger vehicles off the road for a year. Uh, five hundred and twelve tons of waste recycled. Around twenty-five thousand, uh, tree seedlings grown for ten years. And then this is a good one with the way kids carry around phones nowadays. The equivalent of charging a hundred and ninety-two million, uh, smartphones.
Trying to touch everybody, right? So that, that's really a once-through on the project. We're excited. It's taken us a long time to get to where we're at. We're, you know, we, we, we're really happy with the partners, they're IBC again and King and King. This point in the district, Al, he's been great and administration has really supported us. So we're hopeful that we're gonna have an approval here in the next, you know, few weeks.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any questions for John or Chris? They've done, that, those are great numbers, uh, anytime you see positive numbers like that. Uh, pretty impressive. Uh, definitely the, uh, a great project and looking forward to embarking on this new one for the next eighteen years.
Absolutely.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, next presentation, uh, this evening is King and King and LaChase. So I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie and I'm not sure if Mike, I can't tell all the faces. I can't keep track of who's on here. I think I saw Bob on here. I can only see, uh, sixteen people at a time. There's Bob. So I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie and Bob to really get us up to speed. Um, if you've been watching, we get a report called, I call it the Riken Report. So it comes every morning, but that's where your pictures are coming from each day that I've been sending to you as the board, as you've seen it kind of evolve. So it's actually a daily report provided, um, uh, each day to me and the team. So Carrie and Bob.
Thank you. Um, I'll kick off and then I'll let Bob talk a little bit about the construction that's in progress. But just to reorient everyone, um, we have a, a big referendum that passed and we broke it into two phases, where we were gonna tackle three buildings in the phase one and three buildings in the phase two. And it was really revolving at the time around safety and security. Um, so we went through the design process, we went to SED with the construction documents, got approval on that, bid it, and then we were in the throes of COVID. And, um, literally with the numbers in hand, the numbers that were bid on bid day, we all took a step back and we decided we probably don't wanna do, um, some of these security renovations at this time, right? So we're all on the same page there. We did agree, however, that the site work that had been designed and bid for the junior high, Lanigan and Volney was still of utmost importance and we wanted to take advantage of getting some of that work complete this fall. So, um, at the next board meeting, uh, the board agreed to award a contract to Lanco, who is your phase one site prime contractor. And if you've been anywhere near Lanigan, you've seen that they're well underway working on the site improvements over there. We also discussed that we needed to, um, regroup and bid some additional work associated with phase one, particularly at Lanigan and Volney and the junior high, because we need work inside the building or on the building to generate aid for the site work that we've already awarded to Lanco. And so we've done a little bit of work, um, with the administrative team in the past few weeks. We've come up with, um, a list that we believe we're all comfortable with. Brian, I think you've shared it with the board already. That's correct. Um, so this is.
Yes, that was in your, uh, daily updates. I had left it in there a couple of days.
So this is the new phase one, um, COVID edition, if you will, of work proposed now for Lanigan, um, Volney and the junior high. So at Lanigan, um, we want to replace the windows that were down by the gymnasium. We wanna do some exterior work on the chimney and masonry repointing, brickwork around the building. And, um, we still wanna put in a cross corridor door, kind of near the cafeteria to help them lock down the building and section off the front of the building from the back of the building, if you will, particularly if there's an event in the cafeteria. Hopefully at some point in time in the future, you'll be able to do that again. At Volney, same thing, uh, just a cross corridor door to help secure the, what I call the primary wing, the front of the building where the smallest kids are. There are doors right now that, um, you can close and lock off the back of the building if there's an event in the cafeteria or gym, just to keep people from wandering through, you know, nights and weekends. And really keep them in the, in the front, in the gym, in the cafeteria. And then at the junior high, it's all doors. Um, this is something Mr. Pulvino's been very much on top of us about. You know, you have doors that don't always secure, you can't get, uh, there's not, um, guarantees that, you know, the doors at the front are always gonna close when you want them to. So we wanna replace the main entrance, the lower end entrance, um, at the bottom of the seventh grade wing, and then a handful of the doors around the back of the building by, um, where technology has a door that exits out and the, the band room has a door that exits out over there that face, um, you know, the athletic field. That scope of work will be relatively easy for us to put back out on the street because that's work that's already all been designed, reviewed by your team and bid once. So it's just a repackaging exercise, if you will, for King and King and LaChase. Um, and the goal would be to get that out on the street and bid it, you know, this December, if you will, and get those contractors ready to roll for the early twenty-twenty-one. Does anyone have any questions on that? Or Bob Marqueta, is there anything that I, I left out of the phase one B conversation?
Uh, the only thing is, I think, are we still doing the, the generator at the junior high?
Thank you. Also, the generator, um, which is gonna go down at the, imagine outside of the entrance to the lower level of the seventh grade wing. Um, that has been also a high priority for the district and, um, we're gonna tie some stuff into it, especially the, um, sewage ejector pump, which, um, should be tied to your generator. Thank you, Bob.
And you wanna mention the one B work that we're talking about with the fire systems?
Um, so the, what the work that I had identified right now, we were calling one A. And then for Bob and I, we had talked about, um, a fire alarm project, uh, phase two A for us, right? Because phase two is stuff that King and King, items King and King and the engineering team, we haven't designed yet. Um, we know that the fire alarm at the high school has been a priority. It was on the list for phase two work. We know that the fire alarm at Granby had been identified, um, parts of it are original to when the building was constructed. That, we believe there still may be questions about other items that you wanna add into phase two now that your priorities have changed, whether it's security, is it more infrastructure, is it HVAC concerns? But we believe that fire alarm is still everyone's top priority or one of the top priorities. And so, you know, with authorization, we can work on just those pieces. Send that in as a special, small package to SED, get that approval in the works. And again, push that so that we could bid it in twenty-one, early twenty-one, spring twenty-one, and have contractors working on that next summer. So you don't have to risk another school year of having fire alarm systems that, um, you know, you're worried about, right? You, you wanna have confidence in, in your life and health, safety systems.
And I, I think the, the critical part of that also was to, even, even if there are additional items, critical items you want, that we were gonna submit that to SED separately. Because on its own, it'll get through that review process a lot longer than maybe another piece, um, holding it up. Um, and again, like we were saying, that, that, that'll be very critical to get it through SED so that we can hopefully get it out to bid so that we can do the work next summer. So we're just, that's why we wanna kind of isolate those away from, uh, whatever other priorities you have. So regardless of what other priorities you might have, we would still package that as its, as its own submission.
So I, you know, I started by saying we always plan for a phase one and a phase two. Now it seems that we have a phase one A, the site work that's already in process, the phase one B, the balance of the work we need to do in or on the buildings to generate aid on the phase one site work. I apologize, my dog's barking. Uh, phase two A, fire alarm work, and then phase two B, any other priorities that as a board you wanna still tackle? You know, turf at the stadium, um, toilet rooms potentially. All of those items that were on the list, or perhaps new items, um, that are a priority now that maybe weren't when we originally went to the community with this project.
Or even, or even revisiting, um, the office renovations.
Correct.
Any, any part of that.
So that, that's where we're at right now. There's a lot of working pieces to this. I think the board, um, thank you for that, the feedback that you got. We pulled up the reins a little bit after the first rounds of bids and we were quite a bit over based on just, uh, uh, COVID, I think drove a lot of kid, things up as far as even access to supplies, materials, all those kinds of things and costs were driven up. So I think we did a good job by taking up the reins and, and reprioritizing. What I would say is over the next, um, month or two, or we need to now restart really targeting two B. Would you say that, Carrie? We really need to start laying that work out. Um, you know, when I was walking through one of the buildings this morning, one of the principals, uh, shared with me about the PA system and some issues going on with that, which I wasn't aware of. So I think we're taking a look at the building condition survey. Again, we had Carrie and the team go back through that and just go back to see is there anything we're missing that we should go back and say, you know, we really need to reprioritize. The fire alarms were in the nine project and they still weren't addressed at the high school. That's why we've gotta come back around and really make sure that those are addressed because they were in a bit of an issue before summer school. They extended school year this summer. We had a bit of a thing and we had to have, um, the company come in and, uh, and get it back working again right before we brought kids in. So it's just something that that one's been cobbled together for a number of times. It's working, but I'd rather have us be fresh and new and, and be insured that, that it's a system that's working. And then obviously look at, at Granby and Lanigan as well as having extremely old systems, so.
Brian?
Yeah.
Could we possibly look at those leaking windows at the junior high and see if there's room for those to be addressed? Remember, we looked at some leaking windows, you and I.
Yep. We know exactly which rooms they are too. Yep.
Yes, yeah. I, i- if it's at all possible, it would be nice to know that they're finally taken care of.
Yep, got it.
Thank you.
I will note, just for the board to, to have in the back of their mind, that we're pretty, we're confident that the window, um, replacement will also involve some masonry work. Um, in one of our previous projects, I can't remember if it was the twenty-fourteen or twenty-sixteen, I'll have to go back and check, but we did replace windows in the courtyard area of the junior high. And we had to rework the masonry above there because, um, there was flashing issues and that's really where the water was getting in. Not necessarily the window itself. Granted, the windows are, are at their time, right? They're past their prime. But it's, it's a little bit broader than just windows.
Yep. Alrighty. Great. Well, thank you to, to Siemens as well as, uh, King and King and LaChase tonight. You got to hear all about our reopening plan. I probably gotta look at our order in the future, so when we have guests coming in. Uh, but I'm sure you learned a lot about our reopening and you can share all our successes as well as you're working with other districts. Um, thank you again for all the work that you've been doing, um, you know, and, and leading a first-time superintendent through a capital project. You're doing a great job, um, educating me as well. So that's been helpful. Uh, and I'm looking forward to continue the project and hopefully we'll be able to get some asphalt, uh, laid down it, uh, over there before it gets too cold, right?
What do you think, Bob? How's it looking?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's looking good. They're, they're already at their, their base coat and, um, getting light poles delivered, uh, this week. So most of the underground will be done in the next week and then, uh, you'll be seeing it very soon, very soon.
All right, we'll keep our fingers crossed that snow stays away, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alrighty. Thank you. Alrighty. Well, thank you very much. Um, Kathy and I, we're gonna do a budget update. Kathy, do you wanna provide a, an update of where we're at right now? I had asked you to look at a couple of things and share with the board this evening.
Certainly. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good. We took a, a look at where we are as of, really tried through the end of October. And as of, as of right now, on the expense side of the budget, there aren't a lot of areas that are jumping out as, as being potential issues. One area that we did look at, and we'll, we'll look into this a little bit more, would be when we look at under custodial supplies. Comparing this year, what we've spent compared to last year at the same timeframe at the end of October, this year we've spent over $80,000. And last year-
Mr. DJ alarm?
Yes.
Let's see. Item 7.02.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. DJ alarm?
Yes.
7.03, please. Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
I'm going to abstain.
Mrs. Lyons?
Abstain.
And Mr. DJ alarm?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry, could you give me the count on that vote?
So four and two?
Okay, thank you. Item number 7.04.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. DJ alarm?
Yes.
Item 7.05.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Mr. Crandall?
I'm a yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
And Mr. DJ alarm?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper, would you like to kick us off tonight?
Oh, sure. I love being first. So I just wanted to touch base again, you know, on the food program, and thank you, Mr. Pulvino, for looking into it. If it pleases the board, maybe we can even have an update at the next meeting to see any ideas or resolutions that we've had. I wanted to thank Mr. Benjamin for his really fun video. I enjoyed that. I'm a little concerned about the guillotine in, in the background. Let's hope that's a Halloween decoration. A couple of things that I wanted to discuss in the presentations were, one thing that actually Mr. Benjamin had said was time. The teachers, that they're really struggling with enough, getting enough time because they're reinventing the wheel. I just want to make sure that we're figuring out how we're supporting them. You know, we keep talking about we reflect the adapting and evolving. So I'm curious to see how we're doing it in this area. As they're redoing their lessons plans and doing new learning, how are we also supporting them there? The survey that we sent out, knowing that it only represents about a third of our student population, again, how are we reflecting on that? How are we adapting and evolving? How are we pushing to reach all those families to make sure we're getting responses from, you know, the majority of our families and not just a handful? Maybe we have to relook at how we're sending those surveys out. Do we have to push? Do we need to follow up with phone calls? Do we need to do more blast to make sure that their voice is accurately represented? And then the only other thing is with the budget, the last time we went over the budget, we got a spreadsheet, or kind of, not really a spreadsheet, but it was a Word document with some figures on it. If I, I found that very helpful, and if we could get that, the future meetings, that just show some of the financial places that we're at to keep track of, that'd be great for me. And that's all I have. Thank you, everybody. Nice to see you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Sam, how would you like to go next?
Um, I don't think I have much to say other than that the cookies were amazing.
Okay, um, I am going to go do Mr. Crandall.
Yes. Well, first thing I want to do is, thank you, Mrs. Perry. My name was picked first out of the hat this week. So I want to thank you there. And I want to thank everyone for the presentations. I think things are looking pretty good. Hopefully, they stay that way. And just stay warm and dry. That's it.
Mr. DJ alarm?
Yes, uh, well done to the staff for their excellent attendance. Apparently, those Mondays at home are working out. Also, just want to say how great Lanigan's starting to look. I'm by there every day, and it's just they've come, they've come so far, and it's starting to, to take shape.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes, I, I, I do agree with Sam. Those cookies are phenomenal. It's one of the perks of being on the board. I love them. With that said, it's also been an honor to serve with my colleagues on the board, and so I want to wish you all happy Board of Ed Month. I think we do good work together. It doesn't always seem like it's working out at first, but the end results always outweigh where we start. So thank you for allowing me to serve with you. Um, speaking of board stuff, Mrs. Perry, I am still having major issues attending the NISBA virtual meetings. So tomorrow morning, perhaps I'll be calling you bright and early. Or maybe even Mr. Lisi has some tricks for me to get connected. So I could definitely use some help, help there. I enjoyed the reopening update. Mr. Benjamin's part was wonderful. I, too. I wasn't concerned, but I did like the little Halloween guillotine in the background, Mrs. Cooper. It's good to hear and see that they are thinking outside of the box. It does seem like that is making a difference for our kids, so I appreciate that. Mr. Pulvino, is it possible to get future safety meeting minutes and site-based meeting minutes as those meetings come up, put into our updates? Because sometimes I, I know that little minor things slip through, but we've asked about it before. Sometimes they're in. But can we continue maybe with those site-based meeting minutes being put in our updates, please?
Yeah, I'm going to have Jean make sure I, I put those in. That's so easy, because we do our daily update every day. We did remind our principals to make sure that the site-based are up on the sites as well. And then all the other minutes should be going on the website and in our board docs. So, but we can easily attach, because we have a wonderful document that goes to you every day.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then one other question, based on the survey set that had gone out. Are, are you near the date, or are we still looking for information to see if our hybrid versus our virtual students are, are switching for the next quarter, or do we seem to be right around the same?
Yeah, we're actually at the same number. I guess I wasn't as clear. That slide wasn't as clear as it should be. Right toward the end of the presentation, our numbers actually came back in right around 68%, 32%, 33% at the grade level. So we have to make no adjustments. And correctly, I'm wrong. I don't know if Mr. Carroll made it back on. I made it, they must have turned us back on, because we're, I see Jerry on there. And so we, I think it was about 40, 35 to 40 kids actually wanted to come into school from remote, going that direction. And then we've never ever, at this point, you know, had, that you couldn't go from in-person. In-person is our base program. So we actually have about 40 that wanted to come in from remote, which was good news. So it kept our numbers very balanced, which I felt was good. I mean, it, one, that means that people are feeling comfortable right now, or that COVID continues, obviously, to be weighs heavily on people's minds. I think everybody would like our kids back in person, but with everything going on, I, I think every family has its own story, and has its own things and own challenges that it's dealing with during these very difficult times. So I think we're, we're providing a very balanced opportunities for, for our families.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That'll be it. Mrs. Lyons?
Well, everybody's kind of covered everything I did want to say. I appreciate a lot what Phelan said, what, all of you, really. I do have one question. I was asked about the pool. If indeed that will ever be opened, and if not, could we put something on our website just to let people know that it's a challenge or something? I've had that question asked of me a couple of times.
Yeah, actually, when I was going through the bill, this morning, Mr. Crump and I, we actually walked Granby, and I, we actually walked into the pool, and it was nice and warm in there, and it was, they, they're doing a nice job. It's ready to go. But I think we're still waiting for more guidance. I mean, right now, we, we haven't been able to get more. Obviously, we'd work with Chris. That was actually on my agenda to give Chris a holler and talk about that later this week, just to see what other districts are doing. But right now, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I did drive by a Y that has windows that are open to the outside, which is really kind of strange. But I saw that they had that going on at a Y. So there are some pools opening up at gyms and things like that, but I don't think we've gotten guidance at the school level as of yet.
Okay, that was asked of me. And thank you for all the information on the winter sports. That's another question that was asked of me, if we had any plans, and if so, how we were going to implement them. So these are things, maybe you can just put on the website, a suggestion that, you know, no plan yet or whatever, to let these people know, because these are questions they're asking. And I guess last is, I can't, I can't thank Jerry enough for how she represented us today. It was excellent. She did a wonderful job. I'm very proud to be part of it.
Very good. All right, so let's see. I have some thank yous. I'd like to start with thanking everyone that did a report tonight. I thought the reports this evening were exceptionally good. They were, they were well done, I thought, this evening. And I appreciate the effort that went into them. I would like to do a shout out from Mr. Benjamin, along with my colleagues. I found his segment very interesting. It, it just, he made me want more. So I'm hoping our kids feel that way when he's in front of them. I would like to thank you, Mr. Pulvino, for your recognition of the board's efforts. I would like to thank Mrs. Parkhurst on behalf of her unit of administrators. She sent us a very nice thank you, and I'm grateful for that recognition. I would like to thank Terry Warwick for the delicious cookies. She put, I know she bakes them with a lot of, a lot of love, and they're always appreciated by all of us, and I hope that that is shared with her, that once again, she hit the mark. But most importantly, from all the folks that have taken a moment to say thank you, it's greatly appreciated to hear the thank yous once a year. I wondered if we could, if we hadn't already, if we could send a thank you note to the group that donated the masks to the district. I think it's important to acknowledge people when they do nice things, especially when they do something of that magnitude for the entire district. I, I really do appreciate their thoughtfulness. It was a very kind gesture. And please let me know that this board appreciates that kind of support. And let me see. I think, other than, again, I will piggyback on Mrs. Lyons. Mrs. Geithner, outstanding presentation. And I, you do us proud all the time. This was one, today is just one extra moment you didn't have to do. But I'm grateful that you shared with my colleagues around the state all the wonderful things that you have helped lead the charge on here with relating to good things for our students. But again, you are an asset to our school district. And thank you for giving me some bragging rights among my colleagues this week as we go through the convention. It, it really appreciated. And Mr. Pulvino, thank you for supporting Mrs. Geithner to be able to do that for the district. I know that doesn't happen without your support.
Yeah, they make it easy. I have an amazing team. We have an amazing team here in Fulton, so.
Yes, we do. And, and everybody contributes. And again, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to forget to just say thank you for making things work from a technology standpoint, making things work from an educational standpoint. People are going above and beyond. You're keeping buildings clean and healthy and safe. There isn't anybody that I shouldn't, that I, that shouldn't be thanked tonight. There's a lot of good things happening. It hasn't happened without a lot of thoughtful planning and execution, right down to the people that actually do the cleaning. Everyone is doing their part. I know our teachers are very tired. I know that they are tired because they're giving it their all to make everything work for our kids. I, I've heard good stories. I've heard some concerns, but I've not heard anybody not say at some point to me, even when they're not fully happy, is that they do appreciate everything that's being done. And I don't know that our staff hears that enough. So if you could share that, Mr. Pulvino, I think that would be a good thing for our staff to know, that they are appreciated even when people have complaints.
Will do.
Okay, so that takes us to item 8.02.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
You're muted, you're muted, Jean.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Can I say something really quick?
Yes.
I just got a text from a person that said that we were back online, and they heard something about cookies, so they got hungry. I'm a yes also.
And Mr. DJ alarm?
Yes.
And as always, Mrs. Perry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Couldn't do it without you. Have a nice evening.
Everybody have a good evening, and thank you all for coming.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Alright.